...stories about a fundraising, donors and building plans. We hope to be the talk of the town. And we don't want you, our leaders, to be behind and not know what's going on. So that's why we're here today. We want you to be the first to know about PACE and to be able to share and support our activities. Our board was founded back in the latter part of 2015 and we've been meeting monthly since then. And I've got some of our board members here. You guys want to just quick stand up, say your name and say your name.
Hi, I'm Dana Kim. I'm part of the PACE board. I'm also part of Shanna Claire's board as well.
Nikki Turks on the PACE board as well as Bluffs Arts Council.
Chris Russell with PACE board. That's it.
Michael with PACE board, just another.
Okay, thanks. Judy Davis, our interim executive director is going to show you a PowerPoint that will say, kind of explain how we were organized, what our mission is and what our plans for the future are. Judy?
Thanks, Emma. Thanks to the council. So I'm going to try to move through this rather quickly. I see that we're not the only people on the agenda today, so. Okay? Yep.
Page down.
Page down.
Mark?
Yeah. Get it that. Oh, it has to be on. I turned that one on. Okay, Mark.
It's still not working. Still not working.
If that's high end on there.
Go ahead, sit back down. It's not working.
Oh, there you go. Oh, good. Okay, so why was PACE created? And this is a PowerPoint that can take me an hour to go through or we'll have to kind of scurry through things, so I'm going to keep it very, work through this very quickly. If you have questions, I hope that you'll reach out to us afterwards. So PACE was a former Bluffs Arts Council and it is the former Bluffs Arts Council with an expanded mission. So Bluffs Arts Council was into arts education and PACE will encompass multiple organizations, museums, historical organizations, cultural entertainment, just as the name says. So maybe you saw the press release that was in the inaugural in June. So PACE will act as an umbrella organization for art, history, historical, musical, arts and arts groups. Okay, I think we skipped two. So when you look at the timeline events, this isn't something that just came to be about yesterday. So in 2013, this has long been in the makings. A study was done, the Arts and Culture Forum, multiple people were approaching Iowa's foundation about building an art center. So Iowa's foundation hired consultant from Arts and Culture Forum and it revealed that many of our small art and historical and performing arts organizations were struggling to survive. Many of the organizations had just an ED and maybe a part-time person. They loved the aspect of doing programs, but their work of doing business was often the last thing in the pile of things that they needed to do. The forum identified the community needed three things. Arts education that gave homage to the past, our wonderful legacy of our history, our rich past, and recognizes that the future is very important too. A need for a funding structure that would sustain both our past and our future and a need for a community arts and culture center that would keep in step with all of these items. So in 2013, busy year, the Community Arts and Culture Forum, about 30 organizations were represented. That may not seem like a lot, but for our town ourselves, that is a really comprehensive study. During that, Iowa West Foundation asked who was going to take the lead and the group said, no one stepped up to the plate. They said, we would like you to take the lead and so they took the lead in this initiative. Arts Market did an in-depth study and they came out with three key, with some key recommendations. One, you need to create an umbrella organization and hence PACE was created. And they thought it would be best to repurpose historical building and to create that and make that the Arts and Culture Center. Also during that time, the Arts Market report was reviewed with board, community leaders, art community members and museum operators. Yeah. 2014, they had meetings with the Union Pacific Railroad, who at that point had plans to expand the Harvester II building. They were researching and developing a proposed organizational structure for this new company. Building assessments were done with, for Shanna Claire, Harvester II, Rails West and the Squirrel Cage Jail, just to see what it would take to bring each of those buildings up to code. Conversations were being done, initial conversations with potential partners. And during that time, PCDC did a South Main Cultural District Study and made some of their recommendations. 2015 was an interesting year for this project, so PACE was created, which was a wonderful thing. Some initial conversations began about locating the theater and the ballet next to the Harvester II building. Harvester II and theater drawings and cost studies were also created during this time period. Iowa West Foundation board committed their funding to the project and the tune, to the tune of $7 million in capital, campaign funds and $1 million for operating. Also about this time, the Union Pacific Railroad that had made a $2 million commitment to the Harvester II building, reviewed their finances and decided that it was, it was not financially feasible for them to do that at that time because of financial burdens of their company. So then the study placement of the Arts and Culture Center into Harvester II began. So here we are at 20, 2016. We are currently reviewing the capital and operating budgets for this group. We are researching state and national funding opportunities. I can tell you that a team went to Des Moines and visited with that group. We are cultivating local foundations and donors. Just today, we spent nearly four hours with a potential donor. Many of the board has been down in tour of the Des Moines Social Club. And if you haven't been there, it's a great place to visit. I would say that, but will be uniquely different from the Des Moines Social Club. This gave us an idea of how multiple programs can run at the same time and we can start cross-pollinating the people who attend those programs. In June, we hired Zach Mannheimer, who was the former director of the Des Moines Social Club, now with Iowa Business Growth. And he facilitated some community visioning meetings. Some of you were invited to those. And basically, the reason for those meetings was to talk about what the community feels the programming needs to be in this facility. And we just received those, the outcome of those meetings back. And I'm excited to say that a lot of the things that the group had already come up with were on there, but we have many new things that we can include in the building. Also, it is noteworthy that Project Advocates has been hired to oversee the architects and to make sure that the pricing is correct and also what we're putting into the building. So what might that structure look like and what are the benefits to the organizations that might fall under PACE? So obviously, we hope to streamline operations. So one main key is to do the fundraising for these groups, to do shared marketing, to build capacity for them, shared website. And then also, most importantly, is to protect the museum artifacts. It is clear when you go through our current museums that we really need help in protecting those artifacts. So we did a tour of the Squirrel Cage and also Rails West. And these are all passionate boards that are, take great pride in what they're doing. But there are so many documents that we need to preserve, that is the legacy of our community. So also to make sure that we have quality program oversight for all of the programs that are created through this organization. Emma introduced the board that is here, but here's the full listing of the board and it is really a good cross-section of folks that are, have deep love for history, deep love for the arts and community leaders. So what might the structure look like as far as staffing? There'll be one executive director who will oversee the marketing and the fundraising, an executive assistant overseeing web and IT. We know, most importantly, is the director of educational programming. And then of course, the arts and culture staff will follow, pending on how many organizations decide to come under PACE. It would be best for us to contract out finance and accounting and also an archivist. One of the ways that the partners that come, that unfold, that fold under PACE will be, have their voice continue to be heard will be through, they will become advisory committees that will work up through the programming of the PACE organization. So now when we look at PACE partners and how that, how that interacts with PACE, you can see the PACE executive director, the PACE staff and other groups managed by PACE. Also the county museums, other entities and city museums. So we have been in talks, we are currently in talks with all of our potential partners and meeting with their boards and so that they can say, these are the things that we would have to have in order to be part of PACE and then PACE also. So we're drawing up agreements for that. Performing arts and visual arts and also the culinary arts. Oops. Want to go back to the?
For K and I?
Don't know if it'll let the other. So this is the site as it stands today. And so at the top of the slide, you can see the Harvester II building and the retail space. And then directly behind the Harvester I building, of course, the Harvester II building on South Sixth Street. And then the potential of creating a new build, which would be the Shanna Claire Theater or Performing Arts Center. The blue indicates potential parking. And then on the next slide, it's noteworthy to see that they have, we've been approached by Jay Development to look at possibly developing mixed-use live and workspace. The 11th Avenue tracks are in conversations and previous conversations. We understand those to be vacated and we would love to see that be a festival street. So when, this is looking at the Harvester II building, the basement of that building is the perfect place to put museum collection, storage, archival space, scene and costume storage. Each of the floors are about 12,000 square feet. These are possible venues and in no way reflects exactly how the building will be set up. But as you enter from Sixth Street, when you enter to the left and you're looking at the Harvester II building, over and over and in all of the studies, a cafe, bar and market area has been high on the list for needs for Council Bluffs. And that would be, that would relate itself well to the food incubator, which would be a support system for that. So the food incubator, three, three areas the food incubator would be used is entrepreneurship and then also to run the cafe, bar or market and then for cooking classes. And cooking classes were another thing that was very high on the list. Exhibit space on floor one would probably be traveling, space for traveling exhibits that would move in and out of the facility. And then to the right on the public lobby, the new theater, 245 seat proscenium theater. We know we've been in talks with Shanna Claire, we've met with their board, we're talking with Nebraska Ballet, we've met with them and other folks that have expressed interest is OAYO, which is Omaha Area Youth Organization. And also Canesville Symphony and the Omaha Symphony has expressed some interest in renting the space. Second floor, possible venues, rehearsal studios, going to the new build first, the rehearsal studios, two of those and dressing rooms for the theater. And then off to the renovated Harvester II building, shared office space, so each of the partners would have office space in there. And when you think about one printer and one postage machine and what that would do to these small organizations, definitely want to have a lot of flexible classroom space and then flexible exhibit space on this floor as well. This slide will show you the longitudinal section, possible venues. And so we've been through the garden level, we've been through first and second floor. Up until two months ago, the top two floors were slated to potentially be apartments. And with all of the partners that have surfaced, the board voted two months ago that we will not have apartment space in here, that this will be exhibits and education on three and maybe even just open space on the fourth floor, which would be a great place for a venue for weddings and such for 200 to 300 folks. So this is not going to be an inexpensive project. This is a project that's a little north of $18.5 million. So how does that all add up to that? The land and the building have been donated to PACE from PCDC. Harvester II space to renovate that is 4-2. The theater, five, nearly five, six. And then soft costs, you can see how those fall in. There's a contingency of $1 million in there and also equipment and then build out. So how are we going to raise it? So the land, of course, as I said, the land and the building have been already secured. And federal and historic tax credits, you can see that a fair amount of dollars will be raised with that. We hope to apply for the Enhance Iowa and the CAT grant, the food incubator funding as, will be $500,000. The Iowa West Foundation contribution of $7 million. And we hope to raise an additional 5.2 million from regional and federal funders. And in previous conversations with the city and the county, talked about $50,000 support. So here, timeline, I'm happy to say that we're right on task. We're exactly where we need to be. So the schematic design and budget confirmation's still going on in 2016. We should be sending the design to bid and that'll take about, it's about a 10-month project and that will take place in probably the last quarter of, we hope, in 2016 and hope to begin construction sometime in the third quarter of 2017 with an opening date potentially 2018. And fundraising is currently in process and we're going to go until we get it raised. So this is conceptual view of what this project could look like. So this is an annual budget and we know that this is changing. This is, changes regularly pending on how many partners are folded into the organization. But we're looking at revenues of 735,000, a little north of that. And then expensive administrative costs, outside consultants, educational expenses and complex expenses. So revenues, annual revenues, again, previous conversations about the city and the county had committed $50,000 of support and annually. Iowa West Foundation has committed $1 million in operational support. That would be drawn down $200,000 a year or as the group needs it. We plan to raise $4 million in endowment and hope that that would throw off $200,000 annually. We know that this group will have to raise an additional 119,000. Harvester tenants would be allocated $20,000 and the theater tenant, utilities only, would be about, little north of 71,000. Event rental, this is extremely conservative at 25,000. And this is what we hope that building will look like when we're done. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Judy?
How, how soon do you expect some of the funding requests to be made? You're requesting funding here, so when do you anticipate the timetable on that?
It's already in the budget.
Currently, we're currently in, in the process of that. And I would hope that by fall, mid-fall, that we would have the local dollars, the larger local dollars raised.
And does, does the organization have bylaws and administrative policies in place?
Yes.
Okay. Could I, could I receive a electronic copy of those, please?
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Sounds really neat.
I know. Any other questions?
What, what has the response been from the organizations that potentially?
I'll let the board answer that.
I'd say, yeah, I was curious about Shanna Claire.
I'll let, I'll maybe let Dana respond to that. She is on the Shanna Claire board.
Yeah, so I'm part of the Shanna Claire board. I've been on the board for about two years now. You know, Shanna Claire's very passionate about the theater here locally and they don't want to see that history removed from the community. So right now, we're in current conversations. Like any of the other organizations that are going to come under the umbrella organization, we have to have an agreement signed. So right now, we're in the process of negotiating that agreement. So initially, it'll probably be just a memorandum of understanding of what, who does what and what exactly the benefits are going to be to Shanna Claire and what PACE is going to provide, vice versa. But ultimately, there'll probably be also business arrangement of being within the facility. What does that look like to not sustain the, the building itself, but also sustain Shanna Claire, the organization? So there's two different ways that organizations can be part of it. They can come under the umbrella, so they can be part of the PACE organization. I think we're estimating about six or seven local organizations are truly going to fold in underneath that umbrella. There's other organizations that maybe don't necessarily want to give up some of that organizational structure that they already have with their organizations. And so they'll be part of PACE, but they won't necessarily be under the management organization. They'll still benefit from all of the facility it has to offer as well as training, marketing, any of the classes, so they can still be part of our community and part of the PACE organization. They just will be managed by PACE.
Nikki is here and she was the chair of the Bluffs Arts Council. That, you've kind of been through it, so it might, do you want to share a little bit about what some of that experience has been?
Yes, the Bluffs Arts Council actually turned over our 501(c) free nonprofit tax code to PACE. We love putting together the programs, but getting funding was very, very hard in order to carry those programs out. And when this organization, the start process was coming through, we just thought it was the best for the future of what Bluffs Arts Council had already done and for us to be able to carry it out. So we completely turned over.
Other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate the opportunity to share.
Best wishes.
More to come.
All right, Greg, we're going to talk about 15779 State Orchard Road.
Well, I've got some maps and I guess I don't have a presentation, but I'm not sure what you're wanting from, from me on this, but I can hand out my maps and walk through that.
Now, I'll give you a little background. I don't know if everybody knows what's going on here, but Jerry and Jan Hughes built a home at the base of Long State Orchard Road prior to the hills of Cedar Creek being developed. And, and their home is in the floodplain and they had some water issues that caused them then to put in an undersized pipe. And as the hills of Cedar Creek, stormwater comes down, it, it hits that undersized pipe that had leaves them be put in there and backs up and churns and has eaten away really their driveway bridge that goes over. Oftentimes, they get water in their swimming pool and on more than one occasion, they've had a swimming pool inside their home on the floor and had to replace the carpet in the hardwood floor.
Yeah, I had a couple. I mean, are we, is this our chance just to kind of ask?
Sure.
Let me just walk through my drawing to what we're looking at. Well, the first one was, it's just a location map. The second drawing shows a closer view of that. And you can see the house and the swimming pool on the second page. You can see the Hills, Eastern Hills Drive coming downward intersects with State Orchard Road. Third page is a contour map, so each line represents an elevation. And the closer the lines, the steeper the terrain. You can see down around their home, there's only a couple lines, which means there's only a couple, each line is two feet of elevation. So at most, they've got maybe four feet from the creek in elevation. And the lines are spaced pretty far apart down there, which means it's very flat. The last page is the flood insurance map that shows the house, the red dots, the house. Prior to this map being issued, they had never, they'd never done the analysis. FEMA had not done the flood risk analysis. But because of growth in the city, they included this portion in their mapping program. What that means is they now map the risk. Prior to that, the risk was there, they just didn't have a map showing. It clearly shows that they're, they're in a floodplain, which generally speaking, means you're going to get flooded. The last map I handed out was the basin map. So the crosshatching shows rainfall, if it falls in the crosshatched area, eventually it works its way past their property. And you can see the developed portion is relatively a small component of the, the overall basin. So when Hills Cedar Creek was built, it was built by a developer. They designed it to meet all the regulations, the, the box structure, the, the Eastern Hills Drive is located on, the developer built a structure based on analysis that showed that they needed to have a triple six by 12 structure. So there's three tubes underneath the hills of Eastern Hills Drive, each one six foot high by 12 foot wide. So it's basically six foot by 36 foot wide. The county, and that one accommodates a 100-year storm event. The county at Greenview has an older box culvert and I believe it's a 12 by 12. And I believe it was built to pass a 50-year storm event. So you can see, there's a fair amount of drainage. In part, I think there's a lot of drainage because it's very steep. The terrain is very steep, so it means all the water gets, gets there quickly.
When, when did you say that Eastern Hills culvert was built?
2005, maybe? They designed it to meet all the regulations, the box structure, the Eastern Hills Drive is located on. The developer built a structure based on analysis that showed that they needed to have a triple six-by-12 structure. So there's three tubes underneath the hills of Eastern Hills Drive, each one six-foot high by 12-foot wide. So it's basically six-foot by thirty-six-foot wide. The county, and that one accommodates a hundred-year storm event. The county at Greenview has an older box culvert and I believe it's a 12-by-12 and I believe it was built to pass a 50-year storm event. So you can see, there's a fair amount of drainage. In part, I think there's a lot of drainage because it's very steep. The terrain is very steep, so it means all the water gets there quickly.
When did you say that Eastern Hills culvert was built?
Two thousand five, maybe, or five.
What I can tell you is I talked with, my husband's company is the one that did all the engineering and surveying out there, and these owners were having problems way prior to them ever building. And so they worked really closely with them, but the information I was given was they told them what they needed to put in for their culvert and they didn't do that, they put a swimming pool in instead. And it's only gotten worse since then. But all the other culverts, as you go up State Orchard Road, are sized much larger. So I think that, I questioned the culvert that Leeson B. put in as being inadequate since she had already been told prior to that that she needed much more.
There was a bridge there, it got washed out. They put back a second bridge, it got washed out, and then they put in a five-foot diameter pipe. And so a hundred feet away upstream, their five-foot diameter pipe is the Eastern Hills Drive box culvert, which is six-foot by thirty-six-foot. But that shows you that, there's a bottleneck at the 50-inch pipe that's holding back the water and it's not helping. Having said that, if you look at this drawing, I mean, it's going to get, or the, not that one, but the FEMA map, flood risk map, it's in a zone that's going to get flooded. Even if they had the same size culvert that the city has, it's still going to flood in those high events.
Now, Phil said that they had expanded their detention area last year and made it even larger, but there's only so much you can do. They're only trying to take care of what's on theirs and coming off theirs, right?
When it was originally built, the state didn't have storm quality standards, they had storm quantity standards, and that's what we obligated the development to adhere to. So they've designed their system so it doesn't increase the rate of runoff from the pre-development conditions. What you're talking about in this last phase is the quality issues, which is even tighter, so it forced them to come back and modify their quantity basin to accommodate a larger quantity for quality.
And if you haven't been out there, if you look at that topographic map, which is the bigger picture, you can see alongside that road where it's degradating the roadway away.
And that was my question, because I was trying to remember, because I know we've had this come to us a couple times before, too.
Which is what?
So they had, I'm assuming, I mean, before this, they were having flooding problems all along, even before the development, as far as we know. That's why they put this smaller culvert in.
But they'd had, the bridges got washed.
Right, that was before, if I read everything right, that was before the development, correct?
Well, I think one bridge may have been before and one bridge was after.
Okay, so still probably more than likely before.
But I'm not sure of the timing exactly.
So I guess I just don't quite understand. I mean, I get that it's a problem, but is it, I mean...
Well, my recommendation is to...
It doesn't seem like a taxpayer problem. I don't mean to denigrate the situation because it sounds awful, but if, even if development were to cause it, it would seem to be probably an issue for developers or their successors, but it seems like they've met their legal obligations to not increase the amount of water overall or to, lack a better word, channelize it. So suddenly you have, like, you know, if water was going downhill over three acres and you suddenly made it go over 50-foot wide. So it might be the same amount of water, but it would increase its path or pressure. I could totally see from a legal point of view how they would have some concern against the city, but other than that, I, you know, with the greatest respect to them, I don't see how this is a taxpayer issue because we don't take on private liability. So I would agree with your recommendation.
I don't see the city at all here.
No, I mean, I think it's extremely unfortunate. I feel really bad for them, I really do. I just don't know what we, I mean, I don't know that we have...
How do we use tax money to fix a private problem?
Problem that's been there probably all along, I mean...
Dick, I was going to ask, the letter from their, from their legal counsel seems to be rather open-ended and nonspecific. Has anybody engaged them to find out, okay, just what is it here that you're...
I have spoken with, not with the attorney, but with some family members. And what they were hoping was that the city and the county could somehow work together to help them come up with a solution.
But, yeah.
Okay, I'm not real sure what that means.
It sounds like we're being asked to pay for something.
Well, it does.
It doesn't?
But until that comes from their lips, I'm just wondering if maybe we don't at least owe them some degree of engagement to try and clarify, okay, what is it that you're looking for here?
Are you suggesting we acknowledge their letter and ask for clarification and make no commitments at this time?
Absolutely no commitments.
I would agree.
I think, just out of a degree of courtesy, you know, so...
Yeah, indeed.
Would you, you like to see a meeting set up with, say, staff and...
No.
I don't even know if it has to be that.
I'd like them to provide an engineering report that indicates that the city and county have some responsibility for what the problem is.
I...
That's what your engineering firm that said, hey, this is all because of this. You know, we don't have anything that would indicate that, so I don't...
Otherwise, we're in a position of, in essence, bidding against ourselves. And I don't think it's for us to come with a proposed solution or the liability that would require it.
That's how we do it at the court when we get these claims. I mean, people can submit them all the time, but we make them go back and give us. And it's hard, it's hard to do. I mean, sometimes they can do it and then we'll go in and, you know, either buy a flood treatment or whatever we need to do, but, yeah, I think the proof right now, we don't have any proof that the city or county caused it, I mean...
So they're making the request and to your point, you know, so please, please provide us more than what you've currently provided us. Otherwise, we're not really in a position to appropriately respond.
I think I've got direction. I'll run it by you the council before I actually send it out.
Wonderful. Thanks, Scott.
I think that's better than not doing anything, because at least, I mean...
Oh, they certainly wrote an answer, yeah.
But I think before we kind of just brushed it up.
All right, let's review the agenda.
All 51 pages. Thank you very much.
Winning.
It is August, yes.
Anything on the consent agenda? No, one of the, well, go ahead, Alan, I'll come back to it because I'm towards the bottom.
Oh, okay. Just going to ask about the Broadway Park Shelter thing. I was looking at the final cost on that and says right now, for August 8th, the staff work says the engineer's estimate for the project is a hundred and, I'm sorry, one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. When we last saw this back in summer of 2015, just last year, engineering estimate was one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. And it looks like that the rest of the added budget has come out of city funds on that. So I was just kind of curious as to what the additional added costs on that were since we last approved this.
Councilman, I'm trying to remember if we had some change orders on that. Let me double check exactly what that might have been and I'll get back in touch with you. I know there were a couple things that came up during construction, but those numbers seem a little bit higher than I thought they might be, so let me double check and I'll let you know.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Other questions?
Three C. Wondering, is it why, like on a non-buildable lot, we give a forgivable loan and on something like this, we're not recommending that on a vacation here?
You have two separate policies. One deals with vacation of public right-of-way, which has a schedule of fees in it. And let's just say that you vacated a street and wanted it, so we're deeding it to you almost immediately. That's, I think, one difference. Now, in the inventory of properties that we own, you are right in thinking that we do have two classes of properties. One are those unbuildable remnants that really, quite frankly, don't have a value of much, which we have been deeding to abutting property owners. Then we have buildable properties, but for whatever reason, even though they're available, they're put on the website, we communicate with nonprofit and for-profit builders all the time and we distribute that list, no one has interest in them. It could be the neighborhood, it could be that it's the floodplain, it could be a variety of factors. And you're right that we do dispose of those technically for fair market value, but then forgive that value in exchange for, let's say, building a home. And we have been doing that.
This was one that came before the council a couple years ago. I don't know exactly the date.
Couple years ago.
And was asked for the vacation, I think made an offer, but the council countered back with our typical vacation amount. Last winter, I got a phone call from the property owner saying, you're not removing the snow off the street in front of my house. So I called Public Works and they said it was vacated and there is signage up there, private property, stay off. And so that's why they were staying off. So I called this person back and said, apparently it's been vacated, but apparently you've never paid for it. And so I think that's why they're coming back now. Apparently, and I can't remember the exact specifics, but what they want to do, it costs them some money and the combination of paying for the vacation and what they want to do doesn't make the project feasible.
Now, when people come into the office and they ask for vacations, I'm pretty certain my staff as a routine makes a calculation and tells them approximately what they're going to get. You know, in this situation, you're the only person, so maybe there are extra costs. I guess what I would say to the council in this, you're the body that sets the policy. If you're going to deviate from the policy, it really should be your decision. You know, these are difficult things to put a value on. You know, I, and it's a constant struggle, so I think, you know, just think of it that way. And, I mean, I, we don't have an appraisal. I can't look to a third party to say this is a value. All we have is the policy. And I think the only thing I would say, and you might want to talk with Dick a little bit about it, but we are somewhat obligated to dispo, we are, I think, are obligated to dispose of this for fair market value. So I think you need to make, if you're going to deviate from the policy, you can just say, you know, because of the size and the hillside or whatever you're thinking about, that you think that this is the fair market value and dispose of it. If you're inclined to accept this or do something different, that's what I would advise.
I think it can be unfortunate, you know, the costs of finishing or developing or what have you, a remnant piece generally costs much more than you'd think and doesn't increase the value of the property anywhere near what you put into it, and I know this personally. You, but nonetheless, there is a value to it and the taxpayers ought to receive that value. If we start deviating, where do we stop? We came into this policy after several years of effort and a lot of input, particularly from Sharon in that, and I think we ought to stick with it.
Any other thing on that item? You know, one of the things on the mayor's appointments and Sharon correctly pointed out, you know, we've, two things I think we maybe need to consider on the arts commission. It's one, it's not really, well, I don't know if that's a correct statement, but anyhow, at one point, they asked if they could appoint their own board. Lynn Brannigan was adamant against allowing that to happen. We put together the board and at the time, I think maybe it made some sense, but there are a couple positions on there that I don't know, that make it very difficult to fill out that board. And one of those positions is the requirement of an architect who is a resident of the city. And that was filled by an architect from HGM who is not a resident of the city. So when their term expired, we reappointed him and Sharon said, well, Dean Fagen doesn't live in the city. So we don't have an architect that's interested, that lives in the city.
Could we interpret that?
You do have one.
Oh.
I was going to say, couldn't we interpret that?
That's exactly where I was going.
Can't we?
Good to go, I guess.
In some sense, couldn't we interpret the, if you work for a business in the city, are you not a resident in that sense?
Yeah, so that's what I was going to say.
It seems like that would be a fallback, if nothing else. I mean, they have, the whole point of that is to have some concrete tie to the city. And if your business is in the city, I would think that that's a pretty good one.
But if you have somebody, then that makes it easy.
Is, I don't know, if there's direction, if we run into these and others, which I'm sure we will, that makes sense to me.
It just was tough to fill it, but apparently we have, so...
Well, how many architects are there?
Yeah.
I wouldn't think there would be that many.
Not many, and then you need to have an architect who's interested in art, so...
Sure.
All right, I guess we'll talk about that and maybe we have somebody, so, never mind. Anything else on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings? Ordinance for second?
Let's consider waiving third tonight on that. I don't see that's controversial.
Yeah, that's kind of just a silly deal.
Is housekeeping kind of...
How about the resolution?
Just asking for a little bit of clarification. Staff package says that recommend a city council-approved application for the grant and authorizing the mayor to enter into the contract if approved. I didn't see those words in the resolution, so I would assume that when the contract is available, it would come back before us.
We have not typically done that and I'm not sure, perhaps it should have been in the wording in the resolution, but there's no reason we couldn't. Usually, there's no time urgency on signing those grant applications or the grant approvals.
Okay.
So we can do that.
I appreciate it because I'm a little bit hesitant to, you know, give our approval to a contract that doesn't exist yet or isn't in draft form. So at least having an opportunity to see it would be appreciated.
On that, do we know roughly or is that still subject to, what is the amount we're seeking on that?
Maximum amount is 200,000.
Okay.
And I would guess we will be pretty close to that. We're working numbers out now, talking to a couple of folks that do this kind of work, but we'll be close to that. We won't spend more than that, there's no local match required.
Sounds like a great project, hope we get it.
Yeah, you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Anything on the applications for permits and cancellations? On the outdoor permit deck, there are certain fencing standards and stuff.
I, yeah, there'll be, have they met those? Okay. Yes, there are conditions that will apply.
Okay. Anything else?
They've set that up before, they've done that, that's the one they do annually.
This is their third one, I think.
Yeah, I think they've, I haven't heard any issues. They seem to do a good job.
Well, I guess we'll see at seven o'clock.
Ah, August. Ah, August.